Welcome to June 10, 2025 City Council Meeting. Please roll hall.
Mayor Webb.
Here.
Mayor Potam and Carol.
Here.
Councilmember Londo.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
She's running late. She'll be here. Moves us to the revised agenda. Motion to approve, please.
Move approval of the revised agenda.
Second.
So move. Special presentation, proclamation ceremony commemorating Juneteenth. Andy Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City of Hazel Park proclamation commemorating Juneteenth. Whereas Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the abolition of slavery in America, having originated following the emancipation of Galveston, Texas on June 19, 1865. And whereas on that date, the Union Army arrived in Galveston and brought news of the Emancipation Proclamation to enslaved African-Americans living there, who celebrated through feasting, prayer, song, and dance. And whereas the following year saw the first official Juneteenth celebrations take place in Texas, and the tradition soon spread throughout the United States to become the annual social and educational event that it is today. And whereas enshrined as a federal holiday in 2021, Juneteenth continues to provide an opportunity to promote and cultivate knowledge and appreciation of African-American history and culture. And whereas it is important to reaffirm a national commitment to justice and equality. And whereas it was in the spirit of those ideals that the City of Hazel Park adopted a human rights ordinance in 2021 that recognized the inherent dignity and equal and inalienable rights of all members of the human family, and sought to prevent discrimination based on physical, mental, demographic, and/or ideological differences. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Hazel Park does hereby commemorate June 19, 2025 as Juneteenth, and calls on individuals and organizations to condemn all forms of prejudice and celebrate our treasured ideals of liberty and equality.
So move proclamation declaring June 2024 as Pride Month.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would also like to declare June 2025 as Pride Month. Whereas Michigan is home to an estimated 373,000 residents who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer. And whereas Hazel Park has a significant population of LGBTQ+ residents, many of whom have worked directly on the pursuit of equality. And whereas Hazel Park's LGBTQ+ residents contribute to the fabric of our society, hold positions across sectors of our economy, and at multiple levels of government. And whereas Hazel Park has been at the forefront of advancing civil rights for LGBTQ+ people, including serving as the final Michigan city to pass a human rights ordinance and ban on conversion therapy in the absence of such protections at the state level, and which had two residents in a loving same-sex relationship successfully take their fight for the right to adopt the other's children to the United States Supreme Court. And whereas Hazel Park and Michigan's economic growth depends on welcoming people of diverse backgrounds, ending discrimination, and attracting and retaining top talent from around the world. And whereas Hazel Park must continue to support the rights of every citizen to experience freedom from discrimination, and recognize the continued need for education and awareness to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas June 2025 is the 56th anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City, which is recognized as a catalyst for the modern LGBTQ+ civil rights movement. And whereas Hazel Park celebrates LGBTQ+ individuals this month, including raising the pride flag on June 7. And we also recognize the important work that must be done to continue building a more fair and just world for all. Now therefore, Mayor Mike Webb does hereby proclaim June 2025 as Pride Month and encourage everyone to stand against discrimination and reject violence towards LGBTQ+ individuals, to promote self-affirmation, dignity, and equity, and to continue working toward building a brighter future that promotes liberty and justice for all.
So move. And I'd like to make a comment. There was a nice speech by you on Saturday.
Thank you, Your Honor.
And raising the flag out front here to promote the equality across the board. Thank you. You did a nice job. And it moves us to the civic announcements. Any civic announcements? I see Catherine and Margaret are here. Want to give up and give your civic announcement?
Hi, Catherine Elliott, 1485 East Pearl.
Margaret Donnelly, 23368 Davie. We just wanted to come here and say, we had the citywide yard sale. It was really wonderful. We want to thank you guys for working with us and DPW, just to make sure like the trash collection and things, people weren't getting run over or anything. We had over 100 yard sales this year, so it was really great, yeah, throughout the weekend. Got to meet a lot of people. There was a lot of really great connection in getting to meet new people in the city, which we really loved.
And many of you may know that we, Margaret and I, kind of took over the citywide yard sale after the Neighborhood Enrichment group disbanded. And this was that, from what we know, Neighborhood Enrichment had an amazing impact on Hazel Park, and so we were really glad to take over, you know, one of their flagship events. And we so enjoyed organizing that last year that we actually decided to start our own kind of group that would enrich our neighborhood and our city of Hazel Park. And so in January of this year, we incorporated our nonprofit, which is Hazel Park Civic Action Work, and we call it HP Can for short. And so we really just want to build on the important work that Neighborhood Enrichment did and worked with you all on. And so our, our goals are going to be volunteering within the city, things like city yard, citywide yard sale that bring us all together and build community. And one of our really big initiatives is voter engagement. So we really want to make sure that people know their voting rights, they know when they can go out to vote, and we want them to be involved in, in, in voting. So, um, okay. And just an important thing to note here is that we really want to make sure that we're remaining nonpartisan, and we're not going to make any like endorsements or anything like that. We just want to make sure that people have access to voting and know their voting rights. So we're going to remain very nonpartisan in that regard, and also focus on volunteering within the city as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Continue that. So, yeah, so we just wanted to come today and request if it would be possible for us to be listed on the community organizations and places of worship page on the Hazel Park website. We'd love to be recognized in that way, you know, through our contribution with the citywide yard sale, voter engagement, and actually a new initiative that we're taking on is adopting a road in the city as well. So we're hopeful that you as a city council would support us as being one of those organizations that is recognized on the city page. We just want to make sure people know about us and know that they can join our group. And so we just want to have a little bit of visibility in that way. So we, we'd appreciate it if you were willing to have us on the website. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, one more civic announcement. We have a new design for our new street sweeper. Number four wins.
Who's number four?
Embraum Julian, United Oaks Elementary School. Okay, we're going to do up the sweet, street sweeper for the community, and he got the best design. All the votes were picked.
I think he's trying to zoom in.
What's that?
If you turn it, I think he's trying to zoom in.
He might try to zoom in. Oh, he's trying to zoom in.
Yeah.
Show it up to the.
Right here.
There you go. There we go.
Pretty good.
Make sure you clean up. That's a nice phrase, eh?
That's so cute.
It's very cute.
Coming to a street near you.
Exactly. But it was very nice of them to participate and do everything they can. It's nice to get the youngsters involved, and it's just a fun event. Thank you.
Do you care to share honorable mentions?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Number five and number 55 were the honorable mentions. We would do United Oaks Elementary. Last name is Clump. Show it. Let me see. Get it up there. All right, Brian. Show it to the. Right there. Trying to figure out how to get that on there.
Look at the TV.
I'm looking. All right, number 55. Would be.
Last one.
Second last, yeah. Mildred Waznowski at Webb Elementary.
Turn it. Camera.
There we go.
Bam.
Well, it's backwards, you know.
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you.
Very nice designs. It was a lot, it was quite a few applicants, and they did a great job. And we appreciate the participation from the schools as well. Thank you. And all the students. Takes us to the next thing, and our agenda would be civic announcements from City Council.
I have two. I want to remind everybody that the Hazel Park Art Fair happens this August. It'll be the 23rd and 24th. And also our annual Juneteenth flag raising will be this, next Friday, June 13 at 12:30 at City Hall. We'll have speakers from surrounding communities, and our emcee for the evening will be, or for the day, rather, will be Andrea Washington from City Council.
And for the record, Councilwoman Washington is fighting freeway traffic, and she is texting me she has finally made it to the freeway. So she should be here. There's a concert in Detroit, and she is working down there, and she is having a hard time making it home.
We all been there. Any other comments from City Council?
Aye, Your Honor.
Okay. I do want to say one more thing that this Memorial Day event went off well, a very safe and fun family event for all the children. It looked like everybody was having a good time. It was very safe compared to other events in the past, and we will not shut ours down because we believe in having a good family environment, and that's what we're trying to be safe about it as well. And I hope everybody had a good time with that. Thank you for coming out and participating in that over the weekend. Opens up public discussion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come up and give your name and address for the record. Close the public discussion. And it moves us to the consent agenda, one through 13.
Your Honor, I move approval of the agenda, or of the consent agenda items one through 13.
And.
Second.
And who wants to pull which one off to talk about? Anybody? I want to pull number 12. Talk about that one for a minute. Considering we had, was it 12, though?
Unique floral considerations?
No, the.
Equalization?
Equalization, which one is it?
That's 11.
11, sorry.
I'm 11.
I'm just off by one today. Equalization. If you want to go ahead and come up and.
Also for the record, uh.
Come on up.
I'm guessing this is our floral.
This is the floral, this is the unique floral creation.
This is the floral line, okay. Come on up and introduce yourself and tell us about your business.
Okay, my name is Donovan Unique Steagle. That's where the Unique Floral Creation come from. And I'm a florist, and I've been doing it for about two years. My day job, I'm an electrician. I graduated school last year, so I've been doing like a lot of electrical work. I've been doing some floral stuff on the side, so I saved up some money, and I got a building on John R. And the renovations and stuff is going to be beautiful. I plan on doing some stuff to impact the community, the high schools, middle schools, doing some giveaways and reaching out to the community hands-on. My girlfriend's Elise, we got two kids, a boy and a daughter, and they love it. And I'm proud to be here, happy to be here, and I want to be accepted by the community with, with open arms, and I'll reach miles back out, me and my family. And also I have a Build Your Own Bouquet event coming up, so I'll extend out invitations to all of you. It's a free event. You get to come, build your own bouquet. The place is going to be decorated really nice, so you're going to enjoy yourselves.
And for the record, for the audience, it's 24932 John R., Unique Floral Creations.
Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure you don't forget that.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Do you have a phone number as well?
Oh, yeah, my, I don't have my landline set up yet, but you could definitely have my cell phone number. It's 313-353-9171.
It's for the public.
Okay, yeah, for public, yeah, you can reach out to me.
Surprise.
Email uniquefloralecreations1@gmail.com. I'm very responsive, even though I do work from 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM. After that, I head over to the flower shop, and I'm there from about 2:30 to 8:00. So, yeah.
Think you're going to be busy.
I love it.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Congratulations, welcome to Hazel Park.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. If anybody got any questions, you can reach out.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, also for the record, Eric McLaughlin from Dickinson Wright is here. He's bond counsel if you have any questions on item 13.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does any councilman have any questions on number 13?
No, I read through that.
Nope.
Are we good? We all, we all read that one?
Yes.
Yep.
We're glad you came.
Thank you for coming out and answering any questions if we may have had some, but we read it and we understand.
You crushed it, and we didn't have any questions.
Great job.
Right.
It goes back to number 11.
There we go.
We all talked about how we had to deal with it last meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
And I just want to take clarification on how we got back to this.
What we've done is we've put in the request, what we're going to do, obviously during administrative reports, is we're going to request that you contract with AAS to begin to perform as our assessor. We're doing this just simply to preserve our rights. We hope to move over August 1, and move over, and our permanent assessor will be the new firm. So it appears as if.
Clarification.
The, uh, the county did try to make some concessions, but again, does not appear that they want to be in the assessing business. I think that it's wisest and in the city's best interest to contract with the new firm. We'll be joining the cities of Madison Heights and Ferndale, and I think it will be a long-term productive relationship. When we get to that agenda item, we'll bring Mr. Griffin up, and he can talk a little bit about his firm. And I think we're going to be very pleased with the services that they have to offer.
Okay, it takes us to item one. Proposed Electrical Code Amendments, Chapter 15.08, first reading. I have a motion on that, please.
Move approval that we adopt the proposed Electrical Code Amendment changes 15.08.
Support.
I'll second.
Any discussion or changes that would like to be made? Any questions? Very none. Motion, a dissension? Motion passes on first reading. Thank you. Second item. In order to provide the, for the insurance and sale of revenue bonds to be paid.
Now, we moved.
Acquisition and construction improvements and water supply.
That is for, that's the old agenda item. We moved that one to item 13.
Well, you kind of cut me out of one here. Who is?
Who is the assessing contract?
It must be. All right.
Yeah, it's a, that's the old agenda. We have a new agenda that just came out.
See that?
Right before the meeting.
I got it. It's going across them. Assessing Contract AAS, let's go back to that one. Does she want to bring this one up? What's the deal? It's a lot cheaper.
Yeah, so anyways, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Griffin is here from AAS. We're very pleased that they held a spot open for us. We'll be joining Madison Heights and Ferndale in moving over to this company for our assessing services. It will stabilize prices. It will be cheaper than what the county would charge us after their increases. This company has been around for a long time. They have a high degree of expertise in fixing places that are messed up. We anticipate they won't have anything problematic here to deal with in Hazel Park, but I'm very pleased in this environment where so many of Oakland County's customers are trying to find assessing services at a reasonable price that they held a spot for us. Do you want to come up and say something or introduce yourself? And thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Bill Griffin. I'm from Assessment Administration Services, and we're pleased to offer you guys the opportunity to utilize us for Assessment Administration Services. Just a quick background, we started our company in 2009. January of 2009, we began to, to go into communities that needed help, that had problems, and fix them. I think the first community we went to was Bruce Township, but we'd go in and fix them, and that, that kind of expanded naturally to, well, now that you fixed us, can you just stay and do our Assessment Administration? So just by word of mouth, over the last 17 years, we'll get a unit or two every, every year. But because we've continued to fix communities that get in trouble, we've always kept extra staff on hand because every year we would have community that needed us to help. Last year, we went into the city of Warren and spent three or four months working on their role and helped them out. We're, we're helping out currently is the city of Melvindale. So we've always had some extra staff. We've always had a footprint in Oakland County. We do the city of Auburn Hills and the city of Northville, so we always thought we might get a few here on occasion, but this is all came at once. Luckily for us, we do have some extra staff, and we've been able to work through that. And there's eight units that we've sort of focused on, and you're one of them because you're proximity to Ferndale and Madison Heights, and we're pleased to offer you the proposal to do the work. I think you'll find that it'll be seamless. We've been doing this for a long time. We currently have over 30 units that we do in eight different counties. And if you have any questions, I'd love to try to answer them.
Your Honor, I don't have any questions. I just very excitedly move approval of the proposal contract with AAS and the terms laid out within the council packet.
Support.
I, I do have a question. I don't, I, I also support. But I, my question to you is, so for people listening at home, this is about the assessing raise and the resolution that we made at the last council meeting. My question for you is, I'm hearing the words "fix it." Could you explain what you mean by that, so that our residents aren't like something's broken, because it's not necessarily.
We're, we're simply taking over your Assessment Administration. I don't expect anything to be wrong with your role. I've worked in Oakland County. I'm retired from Bloomfield Township. I've done a lot of work in Oakland County, and I'm sure your role is just fine. But we got started in this business by going to communities that would lose their role, and we were going and doing reappraisal and cleanup, whatever needed to be done. But in this scenario, I don't expect any problems at all.
I just want to make sure that was clear for people.
Yep.
Listening, because we don't want people thinking that we're like struggling to get out of something, or that there was miscommunication on our part, because we, we have been keeping up with this. Oakland County has been, this is just a.
And we've, I've worked with and, and in Oakland County for my entire career, and I started in 1980, and it's, I don't expect anything bad. And if there's anything of any question, they would be very helpful with us to, to work, to work to make it right.
Awesome.
I do have one other question. The part of Assessing Administration Services can legal at council at any additional cost to defend the tribunal board. Is, do you have any caps, or are you, are you going to fully defend?
What we do is we will take care of all the tributals. We will do all the valuation disclosures, testify, everything's required with the tribunal. We'll work the city attorney. There are some cases, I don't know about Hazel Park, how much of that you would have, but for instance, last year, we, we worked on Stellantis Appeal. It's a big, very large building, Great Lakes Steel and E-course. There are certain scenarios where we would come to, to you folks and say, it might be in your interest to get a third-party appraisal before you go litigate this case, because let's face it, if you do your own appraisal, it's never as effective in a tax tribunal case as if you had a third party. That rarely happens, but it does happen. And if you got a, say, a big box store or something that we thought was worthy of that, we would give you the opportunity to do it, but you don't have to do it. If not, we'll create our own valuation disclosure and testify with the city attorney and, and see where it goes.
Great.
Thank you. We have apparently everybody approved. Do we have any dissension? All right, we're excited to have you on. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, for the record, we are excited to participate with this company. We're glad they held a spot for us. There are a lot of cities that are scrambling because of the increase that Oakland County has levied on all of the communities that previously used their assessing services. For the record, they did a great job. All the assessors that we worked with from Oakland County were invariably excellent. I did get a chance to run into County Commissioner Woodward recently, and there's, there's no hard feelings, but I believe that, you know, they just want to go a different direction up there, and we have to protect our residents and make sure we continue to have an outstanding service provider. So look forward to working with AAS in the future.
Thank you. Takes us to the highlight of the evening, the Do Not Knock Solicitation Ordinance, so Chapter 5.57 on first reading. There's been changes already done to this, and I hope that we can find some more changes if there's any little things that need to be rounded out before the next meeting. Thank you. I know that this is spearheaded by Councilman Londo. Any particular comments, sir?
Well, first, I will, I'll move approval of Chapter 5.57, also known as the Do Not Knock Solicitation Ordinance.
Second.
Support. Thank you. Discussion?
Yes. About two months ago, I became a father again, so I had an abundance of free time on my hands, and I saw a resident posting in one of the local community pages that his 84-year-old mother had recently been visited by the alternative energy company, which promises very, very low rates. And then after the promotional period, the rate increases kind of exponentially, and was wondering if something could be done about that. So with my abundance of free time, I looked through our code of ordinances and discovered that they were woefully inadequate, and asked staff to please update the ordinance so that people have the option of signing up for a central point of information, a central registry, that would let all of the people know coming into Hazel Park to solicit or to peddle that certain residences were not to be knocked on. And very, very grateful that the city of Troy and others nearby had a really, really great template that we could crib from, and that this will ultimately protect our owner occupants, our renters, as well as our vulnerable residents who do have power of attorney or guardianship or something along that manner, so that that way, those people will not be able to be contacted, and the list of all of those residences will be held in the office so that when people come get a permit for that activity, they will also have a handed any list of residences to stay away from. So I really want to commend Attorney Mason, as well as Melissa Schwartz, as well as all staff for getting this together, and very, very grateful to be sponsoring it.
And as for the peddlers that want to follow the rules.
Yes.
As such, and those are the ones we don't mind. It's the ones we cannot get to follow the rules. As you all know, there's always a few bad actors in there that we need to watch out for, and we would need to protect our seniors and.
Absolutely. I'm proud to be co-sponsor of this bill, or this update, because it's a great, it's a great policy. It really does protect our residents. I spoke earlier today with Ed to verify that there is an enforcement arm of this, which includes ticketing to people that do not adhere to this ordinance. So please be aware, if you're coming to our community and you are acting in a predatory manner, there is an enforcement arm of this ordinance, and it will be applied.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, all solicitors for commercial purposes should have a solicitation permit from the city clerk's office. So you can contact the city clerk's office. Their phone number is 248-546-4064, and they'll give you the information that you need to obtain a permit. Unfortunately, we cannot regulate politicians and, you know, religious groups, but we can enforce this against commercial solicitation, commercial door-to-door solicitation. Probably won't make the Boy Scouts register, or Cub Scouts, or school things, but we will encourage them, and we do have some stickers that are available as well, that you can post in your door, and we will encourage all the community groups to make sure that they abide by that and do try to follow the Do Not Knock list. And we'll make that available to any community group that wants, or any religious group that wants to abide by that as well.
Despite being exempt, I pledge to follow this as well.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second, a more discussion, a dissension. Motion carries. I used to do boards and commissions. I to reappoint James Patterson to the term expiring at 2027, Senator Brownfield's authority.
I don't know about that guy.
And we'll do that one. And the planning commission, Kamal Saied, to the term expiring. And the planning commission, Kamal Saied, to the term expiring in twenty twenty-eight. Mr. Saied was interviewed by the planning department in person on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Do I have everybody's okay on that one? We good? All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. And it takes us down to the old business at hand. Anybody have any old business there, new business they'd like to bring up?
New business? I've got new business. Does anybody have old-
New business? Go right ahead.
Um, I have some new business. Um, I am tonight announcing a new initiative called Pick It Up Hazel Park. Um, this is, uh, something that I've been working on, uh, very closely with the city, um, based on some feedback that we keep getting online there. I also participated early this year with James, um, in a, uh, walkability study here for Hazel Park and some surrounding communities. And part of, um, the feedback that we are getting, not just on safety, but also was, um, community, and this also applies to our lovely ladies over here. We're hearing about things like, um, trash, debris, litter. Um, we hear a lot of complaints also of people not picking up after their dogs. Um, and animals are obviously my wheelhouse. So, um, what I brought to the city with, um, a couple caveats, um, they worked wonderfully with me to get this going, but we're calling it Pick It Up Hazel Park. What we're gonna do is, um, we'll have a survey coming out in the next few days. Um, it's a public survey. Anybody can participate. It'll be, um, posted on the city website. And we are going to install twenty, uh, dog waste stations around the city. There will be ten that will be incorporated with current existing trash infrastructure, and then there will be ten that will be freestanding, um, and those will have their own trash infrastructure incorporated. Um, the great thing about this program is it's gonna be based on city feedback, community feedback. Where do you want to see these? The goal being, A, to encourage people to pick up after themselves, not only just their dogs, but also trash, litter they may see. Um, also, to encourage people to walk different ways in the city. Maybe encourage them to make something a destination. As a professional dog walker, I absolutely pay attention to our garbages when I'm walking dogs, and I often will make that on my route back so that I don't have to keep carrying the potty with me. Um, also, the nice thing about this is, um, there will be twenty installed this year, and then the goal is to do an additional five for the next five years, with the total being forty-five stations throughout the city. Um, I hope that people will participate in the survey. We're also going to offer an option for people to sponsor these stations, so you can put your business name, maybe a family member's name, um, maybe a beloved pet's name, or a pet that you currently have that you love. Um, and this is just a really great way to incorporate a few aspects into the city that people really see as a need, and also, um, to, to encourage people to get out and, uh, touch the grass a little, right?
That's right.
Yeah, ma'am.
So, thank you. And I really want to thank the city for working with me on this, and I really want to thank the DPW for being willing to entertain some of my crazy ideas that I bring to them. Um, but, uh, thank you. Uh, this is gonna bring a lot of value to the city.
Any other new business from council?
No, sir.
I have one. I've been kinda, kinda waiting to see if we're gonna get our caution lights at the crossings that we have delegated on the north end and on the south end. I'd like to see as look at who's some solar-powered caution lights, or electrical, whatever we can come up with, as well as a, one of those, your speed is this speed in those areas. At those, at the little island that we have up here, and down on the south end, the markings need to be better since we have a really cool coffee shop on that side of town, and we have a lot of people walking to that coffee shop now. It's starting to flourish in more traffic, as well as the north end is starting to flourish as well.
I think we, we actually have those solar-powered things on the north end between Mapledale and Shovlin.
Caution light?
And, yep. I just don't think people obey them. Uh, the only one where I don't think that we have them is, uh, the one on the south end, and we'll see if we can-
I'm just thinking maybe we need to get a little more creative.
Yeah.
And try to get people to pay attention, because some, you know, some of you are, you're not doing thirty mile an hour. And we're all guilty of it. And I'm not gonna say I'm not. But, uh, we need to just kind of slow down ourselves and, and maybe pay attention about the, that's why we narrow the roads, to get everybody to pay attention to those businesses that are trying to be the optimizers in our community, and make a difference for us as residents and be there for us.
Yep, we'll, we'll check on that.
If we could, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Any other new business? We'll go to the communications from department heads. Don't hurry up back there.
They'll rush at the same time.
Yeah, they'll rush at the same time.
Good evening. I just wanted to echo on the mayor's, uh, comments on Memorial Day, the success of it. And I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, some of the workers that helped set it up out of our department. Uh, so first, I'd like to say Brian Mix and Dusty Barber, uh, did an excellent job by helping organize the, the mapping of the area to know what we need to set up where. And, uh, they did a fabulous job bringing that together, uh, at meetings we had with management staff. And then a few of the other workers that were, worked tirelessly to get the park ready to go. John Gorney, Jeff Kuzenwick, Justin Jacobs, Rich Walker, Joe Tad Tokash, DPW foreman Nolan Twiman, and water sewer foreman Rick Castleman. They did a just outstanding job, uh, bringing that all together. So, that's all I had. Just wanted to make sure they got their recognition for their hard work, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other department heads? All right. Chief Walker? He's over here. Chief Hamel. They both got up at the same time.
Afternoon.
Um, evening.
Evening.
Uh, hi. Uh, again, I, I would also like to add, uh, the, the memorial carnival and parade, uh, was successful. Um, and it was successful because of the security plans, I think, that we all took part of and we put into place. Uh, I've received requests from news, news organizations on why we were successful as opposed to other communities and other entities. Um, it's because of the people and our planning. Uh, it says, as well as the rules that we posted. It's unfortunate, but we had to post these rules to maintain order. Uh, and I would also like to just, again, thank, uh, DPW. I'd like to thank the recreation department for all their work. Um, again, without everyone's work and input, it would not have been successful. Uh, our police department, fortunately, or unfortunately, we did have to arrest one individual, um, that we removed from the park. Uh, and that was it. Uh, everyone else that I understood, uh, they enjoyed themselves, and that's what our goal was, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Appreciate it. Chief Walker, you were thinking about getting up?
I got up.
All right.
All right.
Lacy, James?
I have something for you.
Everybody's good? All right. Let's move down to the city attorney. Amanda?
Hi. Um, and I actually do have something for code, too, so I just didn't know when to speak. But, um, just a friendly reminder to our businesses, uh, particularly along Eight Mile that go up Hughes, that go up Russell, that go up Merrill, um, but this happens everywhere, but mostly it is going on with some of our Eight Mile businesses. Our city streets are not an extension of your business. And so, loading, unloading at length, all day long, um, having junked cars, having scrap, having things like that is something that we are looking at. The chief, uh, chief of police, DPW, we're all taking a look at that because it is becoming a problem. Neighbors are complaining, there is scrap in the streets, it's causing, you know, tires popping, those kinds of things. So, it's just a friendly reminder, and we have talked to some of the people that are there, but that is something that we will be looking at. You know, and we're using our heads about it. Like, obviously, some unloading and things happen, but it can't be your regular business operation that you use our city street, making it unusable for the residents, or making it unsafe because someone just stuff drops in the, in the street and you're not cleaning it up. So, that's just a reminder from, from us, uh, of a problem we're having that we're trying to-
But time, time limit, time limit loading zones?
Yeah, we're looking at a few different things. Chief and I are looking at, uh, traffic control orders, we're looking at, and honestly, the people that we've just gotten out, like, it helps a lot if you just, I go up there, you get out of your car. I have chief come and DPW came, so it was sort of a show of force, and we just had a real nice conversation with a couple of the people, and that has, this week, worked. Um, and so I'm very grateful for that. But yeah, I mean, we're looking at, I, you know, you prepare for other things happening, but really, it has been, they have listened quite a bit, so I'm hopeful that it won't be an issue. But it is a reminder, because we do enforce for everyone, um, you know, not just where we're getting complaints. And I do feel for the residents that are there, and so we're trying to, you know, balance commercial and residential interests and all that, so. Um, and then on a happier note, I was asked, I don't remember, I think by Mr. Londo, Councilman Londo, to give an update on the, uh, woman from last time, Barbara, the show cause that we did. Um, which is actually, I've had a lot of people actually reach out asking about her. I've had retirees call and like, "You found Barbara?" You know, like, the retired fire chief, you know, 'cause fire, police, DPW, like, lots of people were involved. And then, like I said, she was missing for months. And so, he, he was very excited that we had found her. Um, but no, this, so the day after, true to his word, Chief Walker, um, and, uh, Steve DuBey from DPW and the Water Department went and picked her up. Um, I went over to her assisted living facility and spoke with staff there about some things. Um, we were joined by Tim, uh, from DPW, Superintendent of DPW, Director of DPW. We were joined by our building, our building official, Roger, our lead code officer, um, Julie, like, a lot of people came out to really help, but they did go through everything. She was happy as could be. Um, and we did find items for her that, uh, were near and dear to her heart, and I think twenty dollars and some change. But she did get some collectibles that her son had made for her and a few things that she had in there, but mostly, um, you know, she was just happy to have the chance to go in there. And a special thank you to Chief Walker and, uh, Steve DuBey, who did go in the house, and it was at risk probably to their own health and safety. Uh, it was deplorable, so. But she's very happy. She walks around the neighborhood. We see her. She's very able-bodied and much, in much better spirits since she's gotten into the assisted living facility. So, for everyone who wanted an update, it was a wonderful thing to be a part of, to help her out and to have lots of department heads come and, and help for all of that. Um, because we really, we kind of actually do things like this all the time. It's just people don't necessarily know. Like, we very are much, very much are very human in our approach to how we handle things. Um, but it was nice to be recognized for it and, and see-
Look out for those neighbors.
Yeah. And interestingly, I actually had a reporter call, um, who was calling about assessing when you guys were in Mackinac, and one of the things she asked me about, because she had watched that meeting for the assessing things, she asked about the woman. I mean, genuinely, a lot of people had an interest in her, so.
I've had several phone calls. Thank you.
Really.
Ms. Colbisher?
Absolutely. Uh, thank you for that update, Amanda, because I want everybody at home to know that our employees really do care about the residents of the City of Hazel Park. They really do go the extra mile to make sure that their welfare is protected and that, uh, we make difficult times as easy as possible for them. Uh, I don't know of any other city that would give that kind of a response, uh, to that lady, and I'm proud of my employees when I hear that they go the extra mile to do those things. Again, everybody needs to know, the people who work for them at the City of Hazel Park really do care. Great story, Amanda. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, everybody who was in, involved with that situation. Uh, I'll echo what, uh, Police Chief Hamel talked about, the, uh, security plan that we had for the carnival. It has been commented on. We do have, uh, an outstanding security plan, and, uh, people call me about our security plan from, uh, other places in the state and actually around the country. So, uh, do want you all to know, it's not a cheap plan, but, uh, we do take the safety and security of, uh, the carnival visitors very seriously. We want to make sure that everybody has a happy and safe and enjoyable carnival experience. Uh, Michigan's system of municipal finance remains fundamentally broken, but we here in the Hazel Park, uh, City of Hazel Park, we do the very best that we can, uh, to make sure that we, uh, stretch our finances and provide you the best possible services. And I want to thank and recognize, uh, Lacy Christiansen for her work on the budget this year and the, uh, end-of-the-year, uh, budget amendments, uh, that she worked on over the weekend while she was taking her daughter to take her SATs outstate, and we appreciate that she took her laptop and finished all that up. So, thank you very much, Lacy. I'll give you credit. And Sammy's behind you over there, so thank you to everybody from the finance team that worked on this. I appreciate you all very much. City Council, it's my honor and pleasure to work on your initiatives. Uh, you've been coming up with a lot of things lately, uh, that I think will make the city a better place. It has added to our workload a little bit, but we are proud and privileged to do it because, uh, we know that it makes the quality of life here at Hazel Park better. So, we live to serve you, and we want to make sure that we're serving the residents of Hazel Park as best we can. So, thank you for your initiatives, and thank you for putting in the work on your own. I'm glad that you guys don't just say, "Do this." You guys are willing to roll up your sleeves and actually be part of the solution and put some of the actual elbow grease into making these things happen, so. Oh. And we do have one more thing from Amanda Mason. She's remembered something. So, I will, I will yield the floor.
Well, I don't, I don't want everyone to be surprised, but we did, um, the DDA is sponsoring and partnering with the city to, uh, beautify Ten Mile, and that was a lot of work. Thank you very much to Ed and Lacy, who, and Steve and Tim, who have helped, and Dusty, who have helped tremendously with this project. We had to obtain the, uh, permission from the Oakland County Road Commission. They told us no a couple times. We went back, but we are installing thirty to thirty-five, we're still debating the budget, uh, planters on Ten Mile.
In sports, everyone-
And then having those planted, those are, I believe, maybe arrived today, um, but we'll be getting, or it's sometime this week, so we will be having those installed, um, with kind of low-hanging plants. Um, and when we plant all of those, we will certainly let you all know, but we're really excited about it, because it is the first thing that you see when you come into Hazel Park. And, um, while it is a lot of our industrial-type businesses and things like that, um, we just want to beautify it up and have it look a little better, and provides a little safety as well. Um, so we're really excited about it, and it has been a lot of work, and we're, we're just excited.
And again, Amanda, thank you for all your efforts on that. We hope that these planters will beautify Ten Mile, and it will also, as she said, improve safety. We'll try to deter some of the visibility hazards that we've had there in the past with the installation of these planters.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, Councilperson Bush.
Hi. Uh, first, I just want to thank everyone for their understanding and giving me grace. Um, I was, yeah. Um, I forgot there was a Kendrick Lamar concert tonight, and I work right in the Central Business District, so, um, fighting, people trying to find parking was fun. Um, I want to say thank you to all of our department heads. I truly do appreciate you. Um, every time I come to city council and hear about your updates, or anytime we get emails, or any, or updates we get throughout the month, um, I'm always very excited and, um, proud of our departments and all of our city workers, so I just wanted to express that. Um, and especially those that worked on the Memorial Day Parade and Festival. Um, I did not get to participate in the parade last year for my first elected year, but this year I did, and I was very excited, and I had a lot of fun. Um, but also, um, with the festival, I was, I'm always proud to bring my friends and family to participate in the festival, and they always compliment how nice it is, so. I think that's it I have for today. Um, thank you, and publish the ERA.
Thank you. Councilperson Sullivan?
I already talked a lot today. I'll try to make it quick. I, um, I also want to echo the thanks that was given to our, our rec department, our DPW, our city workers, our police department, and our fire department for making the Memorial Day Parade and the, um, fair such a success every year, and especially, um, safe, safer every year as we continue to kind of evolve our plan around keeping people safe. I also want to thank our chief of police directly for answering some questions that some questions that I sent out to him earlier this week. He was very prompt in his response. And he's so great at communicating, and I just really appreciate that. So thank you so much, Chief Hamel. That's why I called you Mr. Hamel. I want to remind people also, last Friday was Gun Violence Awareness Day. So I want to remind people that part of being a responsible gun owner is locking up your guns. Our police department does provide free gun locks. You just have to go into the police department and ask for one. They will give you one. Also, since I see our fire chief here, I also want to remind people that our fire department does provide free smoke detectors. As you are barbecuing and doing maybe outdoor bonfires and such, just be aware that you need to have safety measures in place, a fire, a smoke, a fire extinguisher and smoke detectors that are working to keep everybody safe. I also want to thank our garage sale ladies for coming in. It's such a huge, such a huge event for our city, as I see other cities have such successful events. I'm really grateful that you guys took that on, and you're doing such great work with it. It was great to see people out walking and driving around the neighborhoods. I also want to give a huge shout out to Luke Londo and my fellow Hazel Park Arts Council vice president, Mara Magarosi-Laitner, for their 40 Under 40 from Oakland County. It's incredible to have two members of boards and commissions in our city and on city council get that award. But also, it's, it's wonderful to know such great people doing such great things for our community. So props to you, my friend. And Ms. Mara, I love you. I also want to wish my mom a happy birthday on the 18th, and I want to wish my dad a happy Father's Day on the 15th. And I'm done.
Okay. Councilman Londo?
Ed, you are always welcome for the extra work. Thank you. Thank you to...
Live to serve.
Thank you to Amanda, Chief, and Steve, in addition to allowing that woman to return, or to, you know, grab some of her possessions. I'm sure it was also a really great opportunity for her to say goodbye to the home. So for the closure that you brought her, genuinely appreciate that. Lacey, 10:30 PM emails on a Saturday. You are crushing it. Thank you very much for, you and Sammy, for all your work wrapping up the 2024, 2025 fiscal year. Grateful to not have to have another city council meeting this month. I hope I didn't just jinx it. Happy Father's Day to Mike, Andy, Ed, and all the other fathers in the room, as well as my father, who is here in Hazel Park, as is my mother, Jan Londo. She had a birthday on Sunday. Happy birthday, J Lo.
And happy Father's Day to you, Luke, and congratulations on your new addition.
Thank you. Catherine Margaret, I was devastated that I wasn't in town the weekend that you guys had the citywide garage sale. I do always look forward to that immensely, but congratulations. The feedback has been universally incredible. Unique floral creations, welcome again. I made the mistake of telling my wife that there's a flower shop in town, and she's just casually asked me when I was going to stop by. So hold a bouquet for me. I will be in probably pretty soon. Thank you to everyone that came out to the pride flag raising, as well as Ed for the introductions, and then Representative Mike McFall, my dear friend Emmy Zanotti from Equality Michigan, as well as Congresswoman Haley Stevens. It is really, really great to have people, dignitaries, you know, representing the state of Michigan and a statewide LGBTQ organization in Congress to come to our little community in southeast Oakland County. And so just extremely grateful to have been able to help put that on. Memorial Day, I think it's all already been said, but the, the day itself was wonderful. The service was great in the morning. I really enjoyed the parade. And then the, the entire festival was just absolutely incredible. Every year, I get a little bit nervous about, you know, whether or not this is the year that, you know, it's the, the problems plaguing other communities is going to come to Hazel Park. And another year, I realize I don't need to have that same level of anxiety. And thank you all again for indulging me in my do not knock registry.
Mayor Protim Lekiril.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also want to thank Margaret and Catherine for the HP Can and organizing the yard sale, and the other things you have coming up. That's volunteers are what make Hazel Park great. More of them. And from top to bottom, just thank you to everyone who made the Memorial Day Parade festivities and everything peaceful and safe. I think I did witness that one arrest. It had nothing to do with the young folks over in the rides. It was an inexperienced person with adult beverages, to say the least. Happy Fathers to everybody, happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there. And on that note, if you love somebody, tell them. And if you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. And thank you for coming out and participating in the democratic process.
Thank you. I'd say happy Father's Day to everyone out there, and to everybody here. And again, for the young fathers as well, it's, it's a little more sentimental to them as, as being a father, a young father at one time. You, you really get an attachment for your child. And having grandkids, you really appreciate it even more because you wanted to have that young child in your life again, all over again. So, but this time I get to send them home. So. But anyways, it's been a great, great week, and it's been a good weekend for Memorial Day. And I want to say thank you, reiterate a few things here to our police, fire, DPW, and all the other employees in our city that know how to do their jobs gracefully and politely. And they do a wonderful job bringing forth the event for us here to enjoy as all residents, as residents. I also want to thank the HP Can for putting on a great yard sale event. I was at a couple of our yard sales through that weekend at different spots, and they was very nice. Thank you. And, you know, want to say there's an unprecedented amount of accidents on our main roads, and that people need to slow down. We just had one the other day. I'm sure everybody saw on Facebook that rollover. I actually drove by that as it was just finishing up. And it makes you think that a little bitty accident like that can turn into a major event and hurt someone. Our cars are, you know, we got a little dangerous, and we just have to be a little more cautious. And that brings us to how walkable our community is and how rideable our community is, and that we need to be a little more cautious in how we drive around the sidewalks and the curb lanes for the rider, for the bikes. And kind of, that's why I brought up the caution lights and different things. And I see it every day because I'm out on the main street with my business and backing cars out of my business every day. We're extra cautious to how many people walk by there. And as well as dog walkers, I'll take one of those at my shop and sponsor it. So I have a lot of people that decide to stop there with their dogs all the time. And it would be very nice to have one. Also receptacles, trash receptacles, feeling have been taken out by cars up and down the store corridors of John Iron. If we could take a look and see how many may need to be replaced. I know that a few were taken out by a few cars in the last few months here through the winter. And, you know, the comments from anybody else like to reiterate? If not, we'll ask for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good night.